Good evening and welcome to this week's city council meeting. Before we proceed, a city attorney report on our closed session.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, as a result of the closed session of the council just concluded, no action was taken or required to be reported.
Thank you, Carl. Our invocation this evening will be given by Councilmember West. Lorraine?
Thank you, Mayor. There's three important dates coming up in the not-too-distant future. The first is September 11th, and in two days, I'm sure, we will all take a moment to ponder and remember that tragic day in 2001. Since then, our country has worked rebuilding, strengthening, and unifying. Fire Station 126 on Citrus Avenue on Thursday will do a 911 tribute at 9:00 a.m. in the morning on September 11th. The public is invited. Again, that's Fire Station 126 on Citrus Avenue this Thursday at 9:00 at a September 11th tribute. Our first responders, of course, are always on the job, and they work seven days a week, 24 hours a day, every day, vigilantly protecting all of us. So it's important to remember them and thank for their diligence. On November 4th, another important day, we will have the opportunity to vote on many important issues, including for our president, who will be the leader of our nation. We must keep our country healthy and strong, and our vote does count. The freedom to vote has been paid for by the vigilance of our veterans since 1776, right to today. So on November 11th, another important day, Veterans' Day, please thank a veteran and active-duty military personnel. By remembering the past and acting on our future, by voting, we can show pride in being Americans and keep our country strong and safe for all future generations. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Lorraine. This time, we are called to order. Rule call, please.
Councilmember Ender?
Here.
Councilmember West?
Here.
Mayor Pretim Ferry?
Here.
Councilmember McGlean?
Here.
Mayor Keller?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lorraine, would you lead us in the pledge?
Please rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving over to awards and recognition, we have three this evening, and the first one, Marcia, I'm going to ask if you would make the presentation.
I would be happy to. The City of Santa Clarita would like to recognize a new group of ladies from the ongoing Chartered Club of Seroptimist International of Greater Santa Clarita Valley. The 2008 Seroptimist Group was formed this past April. The new Seroptimist Group is planning to have their first big event coming up this fall, Bras for a Cause, with proceeds benefiting breast cancer awareness. And the city is truly thankful that these very busy women contribute so much of their time to this organization. And I would like to now invite up this year's Seroptimist President, Dora Zavala, as well as the ladies from the Seroptimist Group of the Santa Clarita Valley to receive these certificates as a token of the city's participation, appreciation, and thank you all for your selfless dedication. It is because of women like you that our community stands strong, and we are truly appreciative for your efforts. Dora?
And ladies?
Please come on up.
Hi. Big hug and kiss to all of you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for this opportunity. We are excited and thrilled. Our first event is actually the Wine Affair Sip, Savor, and Stroll and Savor the Sounds, and that is October 19th on Sunday afternoon from 1:00 to 5:00 on Town Center Drive. We are thrilled and just very privileged to be here to represent Seroptimist in making a difference for women and girls. Thank you so much.
Well, I have the privilege of making the next presentation. I feel bad for whoever's got to talk about the duck. This evening, we're pleased to honor the Foundation for Children's Dental Health for their numerous contributions to our community. The Foundation for Children's Dental Health was started in 1993 by a small group of Santa Clarita residents who witnessed firsthand local children's suffering from a lack of dental care. Since the foundation's inception, they have served over 62,000 local children. The foundation's mission is to provide free dental care, emergency dental care, and oral hygiene education to children of low-income families in Santa Clarita. In addition, the foundation also offers a mobile dental clinic where local children receive free dental treatment and care. I now would like to ask that the members of the Foundation for the Children's Dental Health come up so that we might recognize them for the past 15 years of improving Santa Clarita, one smile at a time. Please come forward. And as they are doing so, ladies and gentlemen, if I may share with you, I've had the opportunity to visit that mobile clinic on a number of occasions, and when you see the work that they're able to do in helping these young people, not only is it taking care of their teeth, but it certainly adds to their self-esteem, and these folks are genuinely to be congratulated for the incredible work that they have performed in behalf of these young people. So, come on up. Mr. Jim Backer, I believe you're the president of the foundation?
I just finished being the president for the last six or seven years, but I just want to thank the city for your support through the block grant program and for allowing us to have our board meetings here every month. I want to just say a special mention of our executive director, Erica Watson, who's done just tremendous work to really grow our foundation. And a special thanks to Bob Keller, who, for now the fifth year coming up this Saturday, has welcomed us to his home and really opened up his heart. When we went to him five years ago, we really were about on our knees as a foundation, and the money that we raised from the event at his house really kept us going, and here we are, five years later, going stronger. So, thank you very much.
All right, our next presentation will be done by Lori. Lori?
I get the duck. Thank you, Mayor.
You get the duck.
I get the duck. I'm happy to have the duck. Hard to miss the duck in the front row. It's like the elephant in the room. In honor of the Rubber Ducky Regatta fundraiser and festival sponsored by the Samuel Dixon Family Health Centers to be held on October 18th at Castaic Lake, I would like to read this proclamation declaring today, September 9th, 2008, Rubber Ducky Regatta Day. I'm sure they'd much rather see the duck than listen to me, so, Rubber Ducky, will you come up while I read this? Does he need an escort? Whereas Samuel Dixon Family Health Centers, Inc., along with sponsor Providence Holy Cross, focus on improving patient care for the underinsured and uninsured of the Santa Clarita Valley, and will be hosting a Rubber Ducky Regatta. And whereas the community has the opportunity to participate by adopting a rubber duck, Quack Family, Quacker's Dozen, or Duck Flock to compete in the duck race at the Sixth Annual Family Festival. And whereas numerous community and media partners involved in the Rubber Ducky Regatta demonstrate their dedication to the overall well-being of the Santa Clarita Valley with their involvement in this event, now therefore, the City of Santa Clarita proudly proclaims September 9th, 2008, as Rubber Ducky Regatta Day in anticipation of the Rubber Ducky Regatta fundraiser and festival sponsored by the Samuel Dixon Family Health Centers, Inc. on
Thank you very much. We're looking forward to the Rubber Ducky Regatta on October the 18th at the lake, where we have a lot of fun. It's a family day. It's a day for kids and parents to come out and just have a blast. When you participate in this, obviously, you recognize that you are helping us with our mission of serving people who don't have a chance to spend lots of money at doctors and medical facilities, but they come and pay as they can afford, and that's what we're about, is subsidizing those people. So every time you put $5, which is the cost of getting into this event, you are participating in this program that makes health care accessible for everybody in the Santa Clarita Valley.
Hope everybody comes out there. I can attest, that's a bunch of fun. We were there last year, and never really thought that watching rubber ducks in a lake could be so much excitement. Moving on to our topic of the evening on public safety, we have Parenting and Teen Awareness Month, and I'm going to call upon our chief, Anthony LaBerge, to come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. I'd like to focus this month on, again, the focus of this month is on parenting and teen awareness. I'd like to advise the audience and the viewing public of a couple of community events and programs that are scheduled this month that I think several will find very informative and helpful. Teen Scene Unplugged is a program or event that's happening on Wednesday, September 24th. The city and the Blue Ribbon Task Force is hosting the Eighth Annual Teen Scene Unplugged at the Valencia Hyatt. The focus for this year is parenting and understanding the teen brain. That title enough should result in standing-room-only crowd at this event. The featured speaker is Dr. Tina Bryson, and she will talk about recent findings on the adolescent brain and give practical applications that will help parents understand their teenagers and strengthen relationships with their children. The Resource Fair kicks off at 6:00 p.m., and the presentation follows from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. This event is free to the public and is definitely a must-attend program for all parents of teens and those of us who work with teens on a daily basis. For more information, you can call the city's Community Services Division at area code Another very helpful program is Action. That's a parent and teen support group. Since 1999, the Anti-Gang Task Force has sponsored Action, a parent and teen support program that helps thousands of teens and their families with counseling services and ongoing support programs for families in crisis. Action works with individual families to identify and treat high-risk behaviors such as drug and alcohol programs, truancy, criminal activity, and gang involvement. Action is held every Tuesday evening at Saugus High School 52 weeks out of the year, with 40 to 50 adults and 60 to 70 teens venting their feelings, obtaining support from their peers, and learning practical solutions to deal with their family problems. Action reaches beyond its weekly meeting by providing support to Bowman High School, Canyon High School, Saugus, Golden Valley High School, Rio Norte Junior High School, Sierra Vista Junior High School, West Ranch High School, court and probation referrals, hospital emergency room consultations, and individual teen drug and alcohol testing when requested by school administrators. Action has designed, developed, and implemented anti-drug testing parenting seminars for Rio Norte Junior High, Sierra Vista, La Mesa, and McGrath Elementary and Sky Blue Mesa Schools. The Action 814 hotline receives hundreds of calls a month, and 40, or I'm sorry, 50 to 75 calls per week. Again, that's the Action 814 hotline. That number is 800-367-8336. Action provides free drug testing for the families in the City of Santa Clarita Dad's Program. Additionally, Action provides a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week helpline, individual and family therapy for children, low-cost drug testing, immediate inpatient and outpatient referrals, and emergency crisis team and crisis intervention services. I'm sure parents and teens will find these programs informative and both informative and helpful. And that concludes my brief public safety presentation for this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions or comments by the council? We appreciate your great work for our community.
Thank you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll move into our public participation portion of our meeting, and we have a number of speakers this evening. We'll begin with Mr. Alan Firdman, will be followed by Mr. Tim Ben Boyston, will be followed by Sterling King. By the way, while Mr. Firdman's coming forward, when we announce your names, if you could find yourself up towards the front of the room, it'll help facilitate saving some time as we go through our meeting. Alan?
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Alan Firdman. I am the chair of the Canyon Country Advisory Committee and member of the Santa Clarita Neighborhood Coalition. I had anticipated coming before you tonight relating our community's gratitude for your decision to help the residents of Ben's Road. With all those good intentions, I decided to take a ride on Ben's and see how the traffic diverter was performing. Much to my surprise, when I arrived, there was not a traffic diverter to be found. Speaking to one of the residents, I was informed that the traffic department was again performing yet another set of traffic flow studies. The individuals I spoke with had no knowledge of when the scheduled traffic diverters would be installed. The next day, I became aware the city staff had sent a letter to surrounding residents informing them of the diverted decision. I am sure that that act alone was the prime mover for stirring up more controversy and will bring some residents to see you today. You should understand that there is a growing perception that some city letters are being framed to lend support to staff recommendations. For example, don't want to deal with a small number of Ben's or Canvas household? Send a survey to 500 or 1,000 surrounding homes and bury the issue in the statistics. Want to claim that you have notified the public that you want to put a trash dump in their community? Call it a Murph and only send out 14 letters. Want to ensure that there won't be any opposition to putting in additional affordable housing in Canyon Country? Don't send any letters. Give this careful consideration. If you were on the other side of the podium, what would you think? As I recall, the direction the staff at the last council meeting was to discontinue surveys and studies and place the diverter on Ben's. See what the results were and report back to the council after a three-month trial was complete. According to Mr. Newman, he responded indicating that the diverter will be installed the week of September 22nd or 29th. He further stated that the delay was required to finish the design and to reroute the local bus service. If the city is so sensitive to Ben's residents, why on earth are we running public buses up and down that residential street? Why does it appear that the council's decision is being subverted? Why hasn't the council members followed up? And why aren't the affected residents being kept well-informed? That, by the way, is not an angry question, but a deeply concerned one, because the same style of sidestepping the issue is happening to the residents of Linda Vista and Canvas as well. Staff wanted the residents to wait for solution to Ben's to be identified. Okay, that has happened. Now, staff wants residents to wait until the Sunset Heights application to gate their community has been completed. What's next? Four years of waiting for Canvas residents is enough. Four years is more than enough. Four years is way too long. Santa Clarita cannot continue to seek solution to problems by waiting until the problem is solved by someone else or the problem just fades away. Santa Clarita's staff needs to be proactive and ready to solve difficult problems. You, as our council members, have the authority to provide that direction and the responsibility to ensure that it happens. Please tell the Canvas residents when they can expect their traffic problem to be resolved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Firdman. Tim Ben Boyston?
Mayor Keller, members of our city council, Mr. Pulskamp, our city manager, and Ms. Dawson, our excellent city clerk. My name is Tim Ben Boyston, former city council member and member of the Santa Clarita Neighborhood Coalition. I would like to begin by thanking the council for your service. I know from my experience that it takes a lot of time and effort to do the jobs that you do and to do them right, and for this time that you spend, I thank you. I would like to speak tonight to the council and to the people of Santa Clarita about the state of our city at this critical crossroads in our development. When we formed our city 20 years ago, it was for the most basic reason. It was the same reason that our forefathers dumped tea into a darkened harbor in Boston so many years ago. It's the reason countless patriots have given their lives for our great country over the years, and it's the reason why ordinary citizens have left the comfort of their families and homes and used their precious time to come before you this evening. We are here to secure a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. But we are losing our way. When concerned citizens come before this body to ask for the city's help, to voice a contrary opinion, or to pour their hearts out in desperation instead of respectful consideration of their problems and contrary views, they are lectured, they are scolded, and they are told they just don't understand. I will tell you what the people do not understand. They do not understand why of all of the qualified people in Santa Clarita, Councilmember Ferry put his own secretary on the Parks Commission. The people do not understand why Mr. Ferry cannot see this as a conflict of interest. The people do not understand why no other council member stood up and said, "No, Frank, that's a bad idea." The people do not understand how we let our local government get to such a big-city mentality that big-moneyed interests from the outside of our valley feel that they can now buy elections and votes on interests critical to our city. We established our own local government so that the people that live here could say how we will build our city. The people don't understand why we now need so-called outside experts to tell us what is best for our city through One Valley, One Vision. The people who moved to Santa Clarita did not move here because it was a densely-packed, traffic-choked, crime-ridden urban nightmare, and they do not understand why a small minority of people believe that huge increases in density are needed as we continue to build our city. The One Valley, One Vision map shows big swaths of our city which will be rezoned into specific planned areas. The people do not understand why the City of Santa Clarita's own development code for specific planned areas allows for someone to build as many housing units as they want with no numerical cap and no need for yards at all. And perhaps someone can tell the people why, in our proposed specific plan area, the developer is allowed to count parking lots as parkland and open space. Parking lots as parkland and open space. You tell them why. The people do not understand what has happened to our government, but they would like it back. May God bless the City of Santa Clarita.
Thank you, Mr. Boyston. Mr. King will be followed by Tony Newhall and followed by Linda Pedersen. Sterling?
Thank you, Mayor Keller. It appears that new politicians need to gain favor with power brokers in order to win council seats, but does one have to? If one lacks the true character and integrity to win a council seat on their own ideas, then they need to align with a sacred cow like G&amp;L Realty to make up the difference. Some political action committees are nothing more, out here anyway, are nothing more than laundering loopholes hidden behind names like Citizens for Integrity in Government that funnel money from highly controversial sources who need your bias on their sides. G&amp;L funneled $30,000 to you, Mrs. Ender, which is shameful and dishonest to the trust the public expects of you as a citizen's first candidate. There's a wide range of decisions a candidate can make that may not technically violate a law. However, there are ethical, social boundaries that the public uses to determine the allegiance of a candidate to the people first over controversial special interests. When you take $30,000 from G&amp;L through a PAC, who's the most controversial developer we've had in years, with the current issue before the council, it's undeniable to everyone that they were buying a future vote for their project. Did G&amp;L have the Boy Scout enthusiasm of being trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, and kind by jumping into a local, random Southern California council race because it's a hobby of theirs? Or did they see a purchase that they needed to make? G&amp;L knew that they had you in their shopping cart. All they needed to do was ring you up. What a deal, a blue light special, $30,000 for a yes vote. Did the people know that they were electing a special interest insurance policy for G&amp;L Realty? The future, or I'm sorry, to refute that you had zero knowledge of this highly, this contribution is highly unlikely, if not impossible. Not to mention, it would be an incredible admission of insufficient, unelectable leadership that 60% of the money used to elect you was without your knowledge or approval. When you said politics is all about perception, then G&amp;L defined your councilship with zero rebuttal to G&amp;L doing this without your knowledge. If I were you, I would be royally peeved that I was purchased unknowingly. But that didn't happen. Winning at all costs meant selling yourself to interests other than the citizens by sinking below the ethical boundaries that violated the public's right to have your allegiance to them first, not the high special interests and their money. If the Henry Mayo deal was up on the up and up, Mrs. Ender, they would have never needed to spend the money. With, we the people, SCV, are requesting that you recuse yourself from the Henry Mayo vote. Why? It's about political integrity. It's about the people who elected you to be influenced by their ballot box vote, not special interest deposits. This is the only way to eliminate the conflict of interest you've put yourself into.
Wrap it up, Sterling.
To step aside and show voters that this money was not a deal with G&amp;L. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Tony Newhall, followed by Linda Pedersen, followed by Alex Schmoch.
Mayor Keller, city council members, city staff. My name is Tony Newhall, and I'm a resident of Valencia. 20 years ago, this community indulged in a great experiment to see if we could govern ourselves. We cut loose from LA County and formed the City of Santa Clarita. We knew it would be a challenge because we were putting our faith in locally-elected representatives, persons that we knew had to be honest, caring, impartial, and above reproach. To be an elected official in this city is an honor. It is the most sacred opportunity to serve the community. There is one person on this council who exemplifies the nuts and bolts of what makes local government work. This person has recognized the proposed campus expansion at Henry Mayo-Newhall Memorial Hospital as a highly questionable project that may drive density and traffic beyond acceptable limits. This person is Mayor Bob Keller. I hope that the rest of the council members here tonight will emulate Bob's approach and do what is right, not what is expected from lobbyists or the special interest groups that helped put you in office. I ask you to keep an open mind, remember whom you represent, we the people. As for the council members, Ms. Ender and Mr. Ferry, I ask you, before we go too much further, please recuse yourself from the Henry Mayo/G&amp;L case. There is enough evidence from past council meetings and in your conduct during the recent city council elections that indicate that you will be unable to cast your votes fairly and dispassionately. It is no disgrace or dishonor to recuse oneself. It is the acknowledgement that you have found yourself in a position where you can't vote impartially or without influence on a community matter. I ask you, out of respect of the public trust, to consider recusing yourself in this matter. Please do the right thing. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newhall. Our next speaker will be Linda Pedersen, followed by Alex Schmoss, followed by Eric Foltz. Linda?
My name is Linda Pedersen. I live in Valencia, and I have been pleased to see and hear Paul Brodman, lobbyist in the council, speak out against an Edison Power Tower project that has created a visual blight on our local Belcaro neighborhood. This kind of official outrage is encouraging to Henry Mayo-Newhall Memorial Hospital neighbors who are facing a project which will not only inflict a visual blight on our neighborhood, but, in the city's own published words, "significant unavoidable impacts in the following areas: cumulative long-term traffic, project air quality, and cumulative construction-related air quality, project construction-related noise, project construction-related operational and cumulative solid waste, and, get this, even cumulative global climate change." These staggering impacts will come from a G&amp;L Realty project that proposes to cram six buildings ranging from three to five stories high onto a roughly two-block landlocked site with McBean Parkway providing the only entrance and exit. And yet, the same lobbyists and city officials who are crying foul at the power towers that accost the views of the Belcaro residents are enthusiastically embracing the overdevelopment proposed in the McBean neighborhood. Not once did I hear the Belcaro residents who testified at the August council meeting called nimby's or troublemakers. Yet those labels have been sneered at the McBean Parkway neighbors who protest the G&amp;L project. Where is the disconnect here? The city officials say they enthusiastically support the G&amp;L project because of something called an overriding consideration of public benefit. That benefit is a proposed hospital, which is not guaranteed. Only the medical office buildings and parking structures are guaranteed. On the other hand, the benefit from the Edison Towers will provide energy to thousands of households. I sympathize with our Belcaro neighbors and agree that Edison should be forced to respect our established neighborhoods. My problem is with the city's double standard. The council and city officials vilify the ugly towers which serve hundreds of thousands of people while they embrace the G&amp;L project which inflicts traffic and air quality problems and only guarantees profits for G&amp;L Realty. There appears to be a definite duplicity in the reasoning of our city lobbyists and officials. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Our next speaker is Alex Schmoss, followed by Eric Foltz, followed by Nadine Teeter. Sir?
Yes, good evening, council members and mayor. Frank Ferry and Lori Ender.
Could you please state your name?
I'm sorry, my name's Alex Schmaus.
Thank you.
Frank Ferry and Lori Ender, I'm here because it appears that your hands were caught in the cookie jar. And if that is at all true, then I believe you have to excuse yourself from democratic processes when it comes to the Henry Mayo project. I'll save the lecturing, it's just not right for you to do so. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Eric Foltz?
Mr. Mayor, council members, council staff, my name is Eric Foltz. I live on Canvas Street, close to the bottom of Canvas Street. I was here last year, about nine months ago. We're still not fixed. When I first moved in, a couple of years ago, as a matter of fact, Mr. Mayor, you welcomed me. A few years ago, it was fairly easy to go to work, cross the street, come home from work, and these days it's taken longer and longer and longer to get an added to my driveway for the volume of traffic. The speeders are pretty tough to deal with also. The stop signs at the bottom helped, but they don't help coming down the hill. Well, they do help going up the hill. Coming down the hill, people are still flying. Several experts have come out, and they've looked at our area, and they've gone everywhere from "you don't have a problem" all the way to "well, you do have a problem, and we'll get back to you on that." It's nice to hear, but they don't live with us. They don't see our problems, and they come back and give you the report that we don't have much of a problem. And then, time goes by, and time goes by. If there weren't a problem still, I wouldn't be here. We're all very busy people. We all have things to do. I'm going to paraphrase from my last speech because I listened to it online, and it was a good one. You're here because you represent all of our community. Many of us in our community, and they're all sitting over there, as well as everybody, is coming to tell you, we still do have a problem. We've had some steps in the right direction, but a long time has gone by. We were told that Ben Street was before us, and when their problem was fixed, it would be our turn. Ben Street waited a long time for their problem to be fixed, and now it's our turn. I heard tonight that maybe their problem isn't quite fixed, and we don't know how long it's going to take. We've got not just the traffic volume and speed, we've got a lot of robberies, vandalisms, gang activity, auto theft. We just had a house broken into at the top of Canvas, and that's all coming back to the increased volume since Linda Vista opened. Now we know that Sunset Heights is applying for gated community status. That's great. More power to them. We're not Sunset Heights. We don't want to wait for their application to be done and their problems to be taken care of. We'd like to be taken care of soon. We talked amongst ourselves, and some of us thought that an emergency gate at the top of Canvas would be a good idea. It would allow emergency vehicular traffic without allowing passenger car backup at the top. I'm begging you, have your staff immediately begin proceedings to finally fix the Canvas Street traffic problem, and give us a date when we can expect it to be fixed. This part of the City of Santa Clarita's philosophy says we value a futuristic approach. Let's have one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Nadine Teeter. Ladies and gentlemen, if we could withhold the applause and so forth, we'd sincerely appreciate it so we can keep our meeting moving along. Thank you. Nadine Teeter will be followed by Eric Thompson, followed by Nancy Van Seiver, I believe it is. Nadine?
Messed it up again, Bob.
Did I?
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name's Nadine Teeter. I first wanted to address Frank Ferry. This seems to be the only way that I can communicate with him. At the June 24th council meeting, I mentioned having a hard time finding the documents on Santa Clarita's policies for not closing public roads. You said there was gobs of paperwork on it and would be sure that I received copies of them. I still don't have them, and I was wondering, when will I receive them? Secondly, we had a chance to speak at the Neighborhood Block Party in June. I asked you why you never respond to my emails. Your response was, "When an email is sent out with all council members' names on it, it is protocol that just the mayor responds." I find that interesting, since councilmember McLean and Ender respond, and typically, Mayor Keller will call me. Nevertheless, I took it further and put you to a test. I sent you a personal email. No one else was attached. And guess what? I got no response. I feel this is an inappropriate way to handle business as an elected official, especially as mayor pro temp. Now, as far as the Canvas Street traffic problem, it's been four years. Back in 2003, an issue arose about Carousel Ranch that was located on Raven Hill Road. Residents on Raven Hill were upset about the traffic that had impacted their streets. Traffic studies were done, similar to ones done in my neighborhood, and there were no collisions to report. But yet Carousel Ranch had to relocate. Raven Hill residents complained about an additional 270 cars a week that were caused by a nonprofit organization that helped handicap children. And yet, the Canvas Street residents are complaining about an excess of 3,000 cars a day by opening up Linda Vista. We now have cut through traffic, traffic patterns changed within the neighborhood. We have gang members, criminals, 18-wheeler trucks, even every gardener in Santa Clarita drives up and down our street. Why is this okay? We were told that once there was a solution for bends, then Canvas would be addressed. Now I've been told that staff is going to wait and see the outcome of Sunset Heights' application to vacate the street. This application was submitted in June. It is still incomplete. It could take months to complete it, and then the processing time, this could take another year. The impacted homes on Canvas support Sunset Heights becoming a gated community, but it is not right to prolong solving the Canvas Street problem. We deserve to have the quality of our life back. Canvas Street and Sunset Heights are two different issues. I must commend you on a decision that was made regarding the new Skyline Ranch development. I had an opportunity to meet the developers and learn that this development is going to back up to an existing neighborhood. Potentially, three cul-de-sacs could be opened to through traffic. I was told by Pardee that the city council will not allow them to open up those cul-de-sacs and are requiring a buffer between the two neighborhoods. Very wise decision. You obviously learned from making the mistakes that you did in my neighborhood and Ben's Road. Please fix our problem now. Direct staff to implement a solution now, the only solution, an emergency gate. Thank you.
Thank you, Nadine. Our next speaker will be Eric Thompson, followed by Nancy Van Seiver, followed by Shannon Thompson. Sir?
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Eric Thompson. I live on Canvas Street. My wife and I just moved there in April. We love the neighborhood, love the location. The only thing we don't love is the traffic. Because being since April, we've almost had probably, I think, eight accidents, just us, from people almost hitting us, having to veer into the other lane because they were going too fast or whatever. And I really didn't get an essence of how bad the traffic problem was until I worked from home one day. And my office looks out onto the street, and it's all day long of trucks, mostly, huge trucks, moving trucks and garden trucks, and 18-wheel trucks. Going where? I have no idea. Up a residential street, down residential streets. And it's-- I will tell you, I've done a lot of frightening things in my life, and one of the most frightening things is backing out of my driveway where I can't see up the road and having a cement truck stop about three feet from my door. That is really the issue here for me, because it's not a question of if I'm going to get hit, it's when I'm going to get hit. Because with that traffic moving at the speed that it does, they can't see coming around the corner where I live, and we're going to get hit. So I am just looking for y'all to implement any solutions that we can. Please listen to everybody and what they have to say. I believe somebody else said that, you know, we're not just coming here to complain and waste our time. I mean, these are things that are really, really important to us. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Nancy Van Seiver? And if I've mispronounced your name, I know you're going to correct me.
For the third time.
That was afraid of.
My name is Nancy Van Seiver. Pardon the voice, but I'm in the throes of a cold, just getting over an asthma attack. But I live on Canvas Street and have since 1985, and I have noticed a rapid increase in traffic. Now, I know that developments have happened. I would like to say that Linda Vista, with that opening, opened up our street to a lot of traffic that we didn't have before. Now, an emergency access would do away with that, and I'm all for them becoming private if they want to become private. You know, that's okay with me. But for Canvas Street, backing out of my driveway is like a time bomb waiting to happen and explode, and that's going to be me in that car that's going to go boom. And so I would like you to consider, and have your people consider, putting an emergency-access-only gate at the top of Canvas where Linda Vista currently comes in. Before, there was a little-- there were like about four houses. We'd like to have our neighborhood back. Okay? Thank you. Goodbye.
Thank you. Shannon Thompson, followed by Patrick Ikhefer, I know I've misspelled that one, I apologize or mispronounced, followed by Kurt Schutz. Mr. Thompson?
My name is Patrick Ikhefer, resident of Canvas Street, the other community, Mr. Mayor, council member, city manager, other residents of Santa Clarita. My main topic today is the increasing negative impact of Linda Vista's open access to Canvas Street on Canvas Street residents. Lived in Canvas Street for 10 years, have three kids, all under the age of 15. I'll briefly state my issues, my position, and then what I would like to see from the city. Increased traffic on Canvas Street due to the open access in Linda Vista, increased speed coming down Canvas Street with increased traffic, increased risk of kids and others pulling it out of their driveways as a result of increased traffic speed downhill. For those who don't know, Canvas Street is a slope that goes around the bend and the blind spots. The increased traffic on Canvas Street has also led to loss of privacy, which means you constantly see cars going back and forth, and you can't have even simple conversations sometimes just because of the traffic and then the people that are coming down the street. I also feel that increased traffic is a contributor to the elevated crime rates due to the thoroughfare access across the Sierra Highway, using Canvas Street as an access street. Increased traffic also includes, now what you've heard before, heavy-duty vehicles, and this is really a surprise. I didn't know that trucks with more than two axles were allowed to just travel up and down city streets, especially if they don't have business in those streets. So maybe we want to look at that. And here's my position. I feel there's one solution that will return our neighborhood, and that's probably what you've already heard or heard around, is to put an emergency gate between us and Linda Vista. Emergency gates for obvious reasons if there's emergency needs. You've also heard that the residents of Linda Vista want to have a privatized street that's fine with us. We just want our neighborhood back. I feel it's the responsibility of you, very honorable city officers, to protect the citizens, and we on Canvas Street are also citizens and residents of the city. I'd like to leave you with a thought. Imagine if this was your neighborhood. Imagine if your kids cannot play outside. Imagine the loud music. I like music, but I like to listen to it in the confines of my home. I don't want to hear some of these in your car. And I like to have conversation with my kids. I like to do homework. I don't want to hear, "Daddy, what was that?" Okay? So I like also not to hear people hunking. I don't like the continuous traffic up and down the street. So we're asking you to please direct your staff to implement a solution now, now that we know that Ben's Road has been taken care of. We've waited for four years. Please do not wait any longer. Thank you.
Sir, what was your name?
Patrick Ikhefer. You want me to spell it for you? It's I-K-H-I-F-S in Frank, A-S in Apple. First name is Patrick. Once again, thank you, unless you want to give me three more minutes.
Do we have Shannon Thompson here?
My wife, she actually is.
Okay. Thank you. And Kurt Schut? Schutie?
Schulte.
Thank you, sir. You'll be followed by Saul Levy.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, city council members, and neighbors. I don't know where to start. I have been listening to everybody talk about this emergency gate. Well, just so y'all know, in our meeting, this only impacts a few people on Canvas Street. I'm dead against that emergency gate unless I get to use it, or my other neighbors. I think that the studies that have been done do implement and take in the whole area. What has been failed to mention is that Upper Canvas will be impacted, Upper Linda Vista will be impacted, Ridgeview, Belmonte, Mount Stephen, and I haven't heard anybody talk otherwise on this. Clevins will be impacted, Nolte, Latley, Patricia Hill, and Robin Crest. Now, from what I understand, we're talking speed bumps or speed cushions. Big difference. Speed bumps you stop at. Otherwise, you ruin the front of your car. Now, the speed cushion is lower. However, speed bumps and speed cushions were made for 15 miles an hour. We have a 25 mile an hour range. What I'm asking you to do is to talk to our sheriff's department and have them cite the bad guys. Why should we, as the-- Why should we as the innocent people have to pay for the people that are doing the bad things? We call, we get a six-minute response up in the field, I'm the one that has to go out there. Not you, you're in bed asleep, not me. I gotta go chase these guys playing their damn music out of the field. You don't do it, I do. Now, if I go about it wrong, then Captain La Barge gets to come and knock at my door. That's not right. So, that is impinging my quality of life. Now, getting back onto this, I haven't heard any updates happening with Ben's Road, there's a nothing there. There's a nothing on Canvas. When will this all stop? When do we stop pitting neighbor against neighbor? We have meetings going on with a small amount of people down there. Well, that all impacts us up at the top. We have to go over this, we have to go around. We're, we paid our taxes, it was mandated by you people, the city council, that there be a Linda Vista street for our access. There's no, there's been no discussion of an emergency access except for a gate. I don't buy it, and a lot of my neighbors don't. Furthermore, I'm a little annoyed with the, the lack of response by our city councils, and we just voted for you. And Ms. Ender, I'm sorry for you, Mr. Ferry, I'm sorry for you, and I hope you think about pulling your vote back for the Henry Mayo Hospital. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Saul Levy, followed by Michael McGrady, followed by Henry Schultz. Levy?
Hello, my name is Saul Levy, and I live on Ben, on, right off of Ben's. We've done four surveys, we've put down strips six to eight times, we've had different meetings, we've reduced the number of traffics, traffic coming down Ben's Road by 700, where you wanted to bring it below 2,200, it's now at 1,500. And each time you've done this survey, you've had an overwhelming response, leave it alone, no more restrictions. Okay, now, all of a sudden, I'm finding out now there's a wall going up that's gonna change the entire pattern of the, of the, of the area. One, you're jeopardizing the kids that used to walk or take a bus to school, there's a lot of kids that take their bike, you're rerouting traffic through the smaller streets, and it's, it's gonna create a problem for the kids. Has, it's, I, I don't understand how the decision was made after we've had so many meetings and we've decided where it was going. Okay, we, we decided on the speed bumps, it was decided at the Rosedale School, that was the direction we're gonna take it. And I was out of town during your last meeting, and I understand that, Mr. Keller, you decided that we're gonna put this wall up, and there was nobody here to defend us. I mean, it just, out of nowhere, this wall came from, which is totally wrong. In other words, this, they're, just to, the regular meetings of the city council is a vital part of the democratic process. I guess that doesn't pertain here. We've, we've voted on it, we've had many meetings regarding it, and we've tried to come up with solutions. You've got a very small group of people that are on Ben's Road that, no matter what you do, it's not gonna be right, but the majority of the people have said, okay, we've given up this area, we've given up the traffic patterns, okay, we've given up the restrictions, we said, okay, do it, it'll make it life better for them. But obviously, they don't want that, they want just what they want. By putting up the wall, the barrier from one catty corner to the other, besides changing traffic patterns and endangering the kids, okay, there's kids that are riding their bikes on Alaminos, and all the surface streets that are around there where all the traffic is gonna be diverted, okay? Those kids are in jeopardy. Okay, my kids are married, gone, thank God, and I'm sure one day I'll have my grandchildren here. But you wanna know something? Those young kids, we're not protecting them, if we're gonna take the morning traffic, which is when they're going to school, and the majority of the people from my complex are going out, okay, we're endangering this traffic, extra traffic where the kids are. Response time for the fire department with a block wall, that's a major problem. And I know that from what I've understood, and again, I was not here at the last meeting, we, the fire department was asked a question whether or not we like speed bumps, okay? And they responded, no. But yet, nobody asked the fire department on that same meeting whether or not the block wall was a good, a good difference.
You have to wrap it up, Mr. Levy.
Okay, somebody else had mentioned something, and this is more of a question to the board. There were letters that were sent out?
With all due respect, sir, you're beyond your time.
Okay, well, anybody just answer that one question?
Well, we'll have comment back when we complete the public participation portion, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McGrady, followed by Henry Schultz, followed by Kathy Perez. Michael McGrady, you here, sir? Mr. Schultz?
Thank you for allowing me to speak, my name's Henry Schultz. I was reading the signal a little while ago, it only takes a couple minutes, you know? One of the things. And I noticed this letter in there, and the letter's from Tom Surak of New Hall, and he makes an interesting point in the land use element for the One Valley One vision. He quotes the following statement that's made there. "In the past, the city and county have both adopted a standard of three acres per 1,000 residents." Well, ever since there's been a general plan, it's always been five acres per thousand for the city. So somehow, so I said, well, let's look, I went back to the conservation and open space element, and there it is, clear as what, five acres, very strongly stated. In fact, there is another article that came out, an opinion from Mr. Rick Gould, who is our trusted Parks and Rec, and he's an honorable man and a good man, and he states very strongly that five acres per thousand is the city's standard. So, there's gotta be a change in the land use element, this is a false statement first, and it's also needs to be corrected to either be eliminated or to state that we have a five acre per thousand city standard. Now, there was a lot of argument in this paper by Rick telling how we have projects that are doing even more than that. On the other hand, the history of the city is rife with counterexamples. I live over in Circle J, and in Circle J Ranch, there's a park that's called Circle J Ranch Park, and Beazer, the developer, gave one quarter of an acre for that project for parks. That's ridiculous. The rest of the park is on DWP right-of-way land, and of course, the trails that they promised were never built, but that's another story. I'm just saying that regularly, we don't get the land, that's why we're so far behind in land. So, it should be the city, rather than worrying about in lieu fees, which they seem to be accepting much too much, always take land, and take as much land as you can get, you can ask for five acres, 10 acres, whatever. Just because the state law, the Quimby Law says three acres is the minimum that you can ask for, doesn't mean that you can't ask for five. And so the city should be always making it clear by their behavior that when you build a project, you're gonna be giving five acres or more per thousand people. So I hope that the city heeds that and makes the change in the land use element, which is just wrong and is bad. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Once again, I wanna call for Michael McGrady, are you here, sir?
Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor.
No problem.
Mayor, City Council, my name's Michael McGrady. I'm also, I'm a resident of, near Ben's, I'm on Alaminos Drive. I heard recently about the diverter, I was very, very against that. What it's gonna do is it's gonna actually redirect the traffic to other areas and cause problems for those, those other local streets. My concern for where I live, Alaminos is a long street, it's about a mile and a half long from top to bottom, is speed. We got a lot of people in the community around there. You're gonna have traffic, and if you stop traffic someplace, it's just gonna move to someplace else, just like ants. I talked it over with my wife, I have two small children, and I've talked to other neighbors. What I propose is speed bumps. I'm a firefighter paramedic for the city of Los Angeles. I respond on a lot of auto pedestrians, mainly in local streets, residential streets. Areas where I work, or where I have worked, they have put speed bumps there. Granted, it does slow down the engines and the rescues, but not by much. But what it does slow down is the traffic and the potential for life hazard. I read on the last, on the internet, last city council meeting, they were talking about the speed humps, the, the tri-humps, where fire engines can get through in an emergency, but it'll also slow down some traffic. Like I said, my main concern is the speed. Traffic is gonna be there, and whatever you do, it's just gonna move someplace else. But on that note, if you do divert traffic, we have Copper Hill, David Way, and also Haskell Canyon, all these local streets where the cars come down, Kathleen, Ben's, so on and so on, you have restrictions on a few of those streets. Block 'em off. Let the guys coming down from Kathleen, or on actually the north side of Copper Hill, go down Copper Hill to David, or go down to Haskell Canyon, they both meet up with Bokeh Canyon to go where they need to go. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
The City of Santa Clarita's Street Art Festival returns to Old Town New Hall Saturday, September 27th and Sunday, September 28th. Free and open to the public, the Street Art Festival features live music, dance entertainment, and great food and fun for the whole family to enjoy. All weekend long, watch street artists create a work of art from a beginning outline to the final masterpieces. Don't miss the City of Santa Clarita's Street Art Festival in Old Town New Hall, sponsored by Lockheed Federal Credit Union.